This ain't my business, but I just know about it.
What's up, y'all? We'd like to welcome y'all to another episode of That Ain't My Business, but let's talk about it. I'm your boy Nesto the Done.
It's your boy Pac-Man, the hood's voice box.
We got a special guest here, a returning guest, you heard me?
Yeah, I think we gonna have to start calling this talks with Creed, you know? Cause it seem like this gonna be a real caring thing here where Creed come on and school the people about what's going on.
What I just told him, it still be happening so fast, he might be back next week.
Yeah, yeah, we literally said that, and look at him back next week, ain't that nothing? So, look, let's go ahead and jump into the footage.
Mr. Arisio, in your prayer, you reference unity and not being divided. You also referenced being a believer in Yesuah, Jesus. Regrettably, your words struck me as being very hypocritical for two reasons. Last week, la- 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 last week, you-
You know, it's so crazy, it's like, he looking up like, oh, you finna act a damn fool, huh? I'm trying to, I'm trying to talk civilly, and you up here acting a damn fool.
It go, it go the other angle right here.
Okay.
Help me for your product, you are not.
Last week.
You need, that man is not gonna do that to me. You are not. You need to apologize.
Apologize?
I'm not gonna take that. I am not gonna take that. No, you called me a hypocrite, and you're not gonna do that. You are not. You are not.
I'ma tell you, you don't censor me.
Enough of her, huh?
Yeah.
Exactly. No, what law have I? What law have I? Okay.
They tried to sink the brother.
And what's crazy, silver, as a silver silver, you all gonna take this. You all gonna take it.
Yeah, what you mean you ain't gonna take that? You, you gotta hear what the people got to say, whether it's-
Yes.
Whether it's good or, or, or not so, not so pretty. The people got a right to express, to express the way they feel about what's going on, because that's the whole point of you being an elected official, cause you answer to the people. So, yeah, you gonna take that.
Exactly.
What you, that's insane.
Yeah.
But, you know, looking at that, we, we see what we see. Can, can you give us, uh, your perspective on what occurred at this, uh, Cattle Parish School Board meeting?
Yeah, yeah. So, again, thank you guys for, for having me, and I'm glad that you guys are getting into the, to the core issues of what's impacting our people in our neighborhoods, our communities, the city, and the entire parish. So, so that's great. And, and your target audience is now being elevated. You guys are to be commended for elevating them so they can understand how all of these issues impact their daily lives. So, so yesterday at an executive session, we were there as a byproduct of what happened last week, when seven of the Cattle Parish School Board members voted to circumvent the process that they had paid seventy thousand dollars for in order to do a national search for our next superintendent. So, that whole thing was already bogus. And so, several individuals, Amari Hassan, some of the church leaders, they mobilized in order to now start to rally people to attend the executive session on yesterday, and they did a good job of bringing a lot of people out. So, as I was sitting down, I'm listening to Barry Rochelle come up with this superficial prayer, and, and, and as he's so-called praying, I don't know how devils pray, but at the end of the day, the devil is actually praying, and, and, and this is what ends up happening. He starts talking about unity and, and not being divisive, and he was a believer in Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. So, I already knew, I said, I'm gonna use his words against him. And so, that's, that's, that's what I had already planned to do. I knew it would piss him off, but I didn't know that devil would totally come out on it. So, I was, you know, very respectful of the whole situation, and once I got to telling him, regrettably, all of the words that you're saying are hypocritical, boom, he exploded. And that's, that's what happened. And then they tried to censor me.
Real fast, you know what that reminded me?
What's that?
You know, on, on like them exorcist movies when they call the demon, and then they get the acting the fool, that reminded me of that.
Exactly, exactly. And that's what you, that's what you have, and what has happened now, Donald Trump has, has struck a chord with a lot of pale-skinned European descendants. And, and these pale-skinned European descendants, especially the European descendant males, they, they feel like it do what Donald Trump does. And, and, and I have no issue with it, but be ready for that clapback. And he wasn't ready for the clapback, because at the end of the day, everything that they're doing in these meetings are, it basically is in violation of state law. So, what they tried to do is say that I couldn't refer to him by name, even though he is a public official, he is an elected official. So, how would I now address him if I don't address him by name? So, they came up with this policy years ago, and these retarded Negroes who sit on that board, they're so stupid that they, their whole mindset is trying to create this illusion that they get along with, with balls, with, with white folks. That's not your goddamn job when you go to these meetings. Your job is to fight for resources for your constituency, which, as it relates to a school board, you're talking about the children, the parents of the children, or whatever caregivers that they have, your neighborhood and your community. Because the schools are not just schools, they are assets of a neighborhood and a neighborhood development group, the economics, all of that is a part of school. And so, these Negro school board members, all they know is to capitulate and be Uncle Toms. And maybe every now and then you'll have one that may try to do their job or learn, but the majority of them have not read their goddamn bylaws. They don't know Robert Rules of Order, and they damn sure don't know state law. Because if they knew state law, you wouldn't have created a policy that now opens you up for liable trying to now censor me. And so, I made damn sure that that wasn't gonna happen. So, we, I ultimately went back up at the end, they tried to censor me again. And so, I say, show me the law that I'm breaking. See, so, so if you can't show the law, you can't tell me that I can't refer to you by name. So, I went to work and called his ass out again, as well as the two people, especially Ms. Bonita Dozart, because it was her vote, along with the Republicans, that now created this situation where they circumvented the process by which they were supposed to be hiring the most qualified candidate.
So, let me ask you a quick question. Robert Rules of Order, isn't it that they have to be polite to each other like we, the, the people don't, though, right?
Well, well, there's decorum in, in meetings, you don't wanna be so outrageous. So, there's, there's some respect that needs to, to be had, but you're, you're correct, but it's how you conduct, how they conduct the meeting between themselves, but it also has, when you're dealing with the general public, there's a decorum policies that go into that. But, yeah, it is primarily how they conduct the meeting themselves.
I would say.
Yeah, so you're, you're right on point with that. And so, but they've been so accustomed to shaming citizens, and that's why people are intimidated to come there. Now, when you think about this, Robert, you've been to city council meeting, and you've been to parish commission meeting. We don't play that in city council, you don't do that in parish commission, you don't do that in the state legislature, and you don't do that at the federal level. So, what in the hell would, would these fools believe that somebody is gonna abide by a policy that circumvents state and federal law? They fall under state law, but see, the people don't know it, so they'll use the term policy. Policy doesn't trump law. Policy ain't goddamn law. Okay? So, so let's say Walmart has a policy that you can't come in their store without any clothes on. That's, that's their policy. You cannot come into my store without any shirt or shoes. That's their policy. They can do that. That's policy. But they cannot say, if you come to Walmart, you can only spend one dollar bills. You, that, that, that can't happen, because all of these bills are twenty, a hundred, a five, all of these things are legal tender. So, so you gotta know the difference between policy and law. They don't know the difference between policy and law. And so, I stood on that, and so what ended up happening, and shout out to Don Otis, Otis, and Don, Don Gibbs, two of my good colleagues and two of our best professional law enforcement officers in this, this city and parish, they let it be known, no, sir, no, sir, he's right. That's our policy, but he's not breaking law. So, you can't censor this dude based on the fact that you all wanna figure a way of not coming off looking bad in the public. And I didn't even go in the paint on his punk ass, cause I could've got with him in an intellectually gangster way. But I was just real, being real polite and nice, but now, what ends up happening, the reality of your non-Christian identity comes out, and that's what he objected to. That's what that whole situation was, because they did not want the public out in TV land to now learn that this whole thing is just straight game.
And I, I got a question. Uh, I noticed, uh, it looked like they had, uh, tried to get, uh, like he tried to get one of the, the, the black, one of his, his black, uh, board members to, to talk to you or something, like that was gonna work.
So, so, so they sent Reginald Abrams, Attorney Reginald Abrams down, because Reginald is their attorney for the school board, and so Reds came down and, and asked me to not call him by name. I say, no, sir, no, sir. You, you have people who are trying to destroy melanated children. You have people on that platform trying to destroy African-American communities. So, you think I give a damn about his feelings? Hell, no, I don't give a damn about his feelings. So, no, I'm not going to abide by this bogus policy, and I made that very clear to Brother Reginald. And, 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 and when you look at the school board, you can see the ignorance of all of them, right? The melanated ones and the, the so-called white ones, they don't know what the hell they're doing. Because you're never gonna have an attorney at a city council meeting as involved as Reginald Abrams is with the school board, talking that much. Same with the parish commission. The reason that Reginald is so involved in this process is because most of those people on that, that daze are straight up incompetent.
They can't keep it flow, keep the, keep it flowing.
Is that okay, boss? Can we do that, boss? Is that okay, boss? Can we say that, boss? And so, so, so now you're dealing with a situation where people are presiding over hundreds of millions of dollars. Their budget is like six hundred million dollars a year. And so, you got all these incompetent people who don't know what the hell they're doing, and, and now you're referring to the attorney. The attorney is supposed to be a guy, but you need to know the rules of engagement, the policies and state law, you goddamn self. It's really that damn simple.
They had the biggest budget out of like the city and the parish and, and, and them three.
So, so it's basically, you can say that, so it's the city, the parish, I mean, the city, the school board, and then the cattle parish commission. So, it's, it's, you know, whatnot and whatnot. Uh, the city is really a billion-dollar corporation that their budget will hover down, because they're rolling with city tax dollars. But yet, in theory, the, the parish, the school boards' tax revenues are typically slightly larger, but when the city is rolling the way it needs to roll, their budget is really larger, because the city of Shreveport makes up roughly eighty, eighty-five percent of the parish of Cattle.
Makes sense.
So, the other smaller towns, they really don't, their tax base doesn't really contribute as largely as the city of Shreveport.
Okay. Yeah, and, 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 and what's crazy is, cause like, I know when I first started speaking at like the commission and the, in the city, in the city council, hell, I was calling people by names living right, right?
Yeah.
And even one of the times where I did decide to not call the person name, he knew who I was talking about, and he addressed me, not, not disrespectfully, he just was saying, well, you know, you said what you said, but I want you to get with me afterwards, and I'mma keep my promise to you.
Yeah.
That type of thing. Where does this entitlement come from that, that, that these school board members feel like they, they hold more, you know, authority than, than real officials? Like, I'm not saying they not real officials, of course, they elected, you know, but where does this entitlement come from?
It, 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 so what you have, especially from the Negroes, and, and I wanna put this in perspective for y'all. And, 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 and you guys are young, so we're gonna break this down, and, and you'll see where the entitlement comes from. chattel slavery. I'mma take y'all through this timeline, so you can really see why our people are so messed up, and why those Negroes on the school board and the parish commission, and even some of the Negroes that we deal with on the city council or in the state legislature is so messed up. From fifteen fifty-five to eighteen sixty-five was the period known as chattel slavery. And see, this is why these white folks do not want critical race theory taught in school. See, cause when you start to put it together, then it's gonna make sense.
And it's not even taught in grade school, no way.
And, and, and all. I mean, why would you, I mean, th- these are high-level concepts. So, so from fifteen fifty-five to eighteen sixty-five, that's three hundred and ten years. That's fifteen and a half generations. A generation is twenty years. So, a generation is like, you, your generation, then you got your mom, that's your generation. You got a child, right? So, now that's another generation, right? So, typically, it's twenty years, typically, between each entity. So, we got twenty and a half generations between fifteen fifty-five and eighteen sixty-five. Our people were stripped of their culture, they, their spirituality was basically suppressed, and that was elevated. They elevated slave Christianity for our people, and, and all that was to reprogram our minds. We were trained to hate each other, we were trained to rape and murder, I mean, just all of this savage behavior. We were worked from sunup to sundown for no, with no pay. Okay? That was for three hundred and ten years from, from the shores of Africa to now the New World. There were some, we had some of our ancestors who were already here, but even those, they were captured and put into the mix. All right. January the thirty-first, eighteen sixty-five, the Thirteen Amendment of the United States was passed. And, and it said that we were, you know, physically free, except, you know, if you get caught for a crime. So, that was the, that was where we go with slavery by another name. So, that, that's where this book comes in. Okay? And y'all can go on YouTube again and look at this video, Slavery by Another Name, and you will really see what ends up happening. So, this is where they start to put in the convict leasing program with the black codes and all of these particular laws, right? So, from, from February the first, eighteen sixty-five, to nineteen sixty-four, we were in a period called legalized apartheid, AKA Jim Crow segregation, all right? So, so you got ninety-nine years plus three hundred and ten years. So, that is four hundred and nineteen years of hardcore oppression against our people. So, nineteen sixty-four, the Civil Rights Act is passed. Civil Rights Act doesn't take into full effect. This is what creates the, where we're at now, the illusion of integration. So, I call this period that we're in right now, the pseudo-integration period, where Negroes feel good, cause they can go to goddamn McDonald's and Whataburger and, and, and Walmart, and they can go on cruises and give all their damn money away back to their oppressor. So, this is the period that we're in right now.
And I was reading a study, and it says that right now in twenty, I, I think, I, I think it may have been twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, when I actually read it, and it was saying, at that date and time, that the way we live is more segregated than it was during segregation.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we're gonna break that down, because all of this gets to the school, and, and, and the people don't understand this, so that's why I'm taking you through the timeline. So, so now, nineteen sixty-four, Civil Rights Act is passed. It takes roughly six years for six to eight years, but I'mma start the clock in nineteen seventy. So, it takes six years. We now, they figured out how they gonna integrate children, Brown versus Topeka Board of Education, and happened. So, Negroes, this book is important. It's called Teaching Equality: Black Schools in the Age of Jim Crow. This is a powerful book, it's only about sixty-some pages. You need to check this book out.
They haven't banned these books yet in the school system.
Now, well, I don't know if this is in the school. I, I got it, you know, banning outside of the ram, but, but this, and this is written by a white boy. This is written by Adam Fairclough, he's from Europe.
I, I know they banned like certain books like that in the prison system.
Oh, yeah. They don't want you, see, at some point, if you start to learn this game, now you start to infect other people with different vibrations, and they do not want that to happen. So, so we're gonna discuss this, because at the end of the day, this is what it's all about. What does that say?
Black labor, white, white wealth.
That's what this is all about.
I heard that.
Black labor and white wealth. See, so if I keep you in a state of perpetual ignorance, where you do not understand the dynamics of how all of this works, I can always pimp you. You're gonna always be my slave. Malcolm X, Malik Shabazz said it best, "Education is our passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for today." But if you're miseducated, Dr. Cartage Woodson, if you're miseducated, and now your people abandon your black schools to now try to integrate you where? With white students. Now, you're, you're investing your trust and belief that the same people who had the descendants of them who held you in chattel slavery, and then in Jim Crow segregation, are now gonna do what?
Get, try to give you an education that they once denied you.
And, and I'mma tell you another thing that's crazy, like dealing with it, and I, and I, I had this problem with a lot of black people, even black people that's kinda remotely intelligent.
Yeah.
When a white person say something, they assume-
Yeah.
They know what they talking about.
Automatic.
And I try to tell them, I would, I used to be in classrooms with some of these white people. These motherf- these, they dumb. Like, I was always smarter than all of them. So, I don't see like, I don't see why people always like, but I, I, you telling me, you, you know, you telling me why. But, and, and I'd be, I just want our people to start trusting their information more than you trust this stranger that you don't know what his educational background is.
Exactly. And, and, and this is, this is why with the school board issue, this is why they didn't want Keith Burton to have to interview in competition with these other phenomenal candidates. There were five other phenomenal candidates.
What you just said, they ain't want what?
They didn't want him to have to interview in competition.
So, they don't want to interview everybody?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I, I, I get this little news- I get this little news article in my email from when I used to be subscribed to their paper, and, and I don't know the article was saying he was the most qualified candidate.
A whole, that's a goddamn lie.
The owner of the article?
Yeah, you don't like saying his name, so I ain't say his name.
You talking about, he talking about fucking, um, what's the racist name down?
John Settle?
That called the boy.
Straight track, straight track. Straight track. Look, look, let me tell you something. John Settle also said the same thing about who? John Nicholson. We know that John Nicholson was not even, shouldn't have even been considered for, um, sheriff. But at the end of the day, now you move the bar, because it ain't got nothing to do with qualifications when it comes to a white boy getting in a job. And that's the same thing with this cat. This dude is the least qualified of the six candidates who are the so-called finalists. Bro, you got a couple of sisters that's so devastating, it's unreal, but they don't want the public, see, that, none of them have been here to interview. So, that's what the meeting last week was about, so they had him up on Zoom. And so, these were the six finalists, and so, it should have been said, okay, we're gonna now take the top three selections, and then bring them in to now, uh, be interviewed, but that's not what happened. What ends up happening, they interview these phenomenal candidates, Keith Burton is not even, he's one of the six, but only because he's a part of the, the deals that have been cut so that they can quote-unquote, get somebody local. But check this out, here's the other ga- game. And I applaud Terrence Vincent for asking this question, what about the identity of the-
Laker.
Of the other local applicants? They didn't want, they didn't want that to come out. Why? Because there are other people locally who have better credentials than Keith Burton. And we're gonna talk about why they want this guy in this position, because it's in direct relationship to a piece of legislation that they added to the agenda last night.
All right, so look, let me ask you one more question before I let you, before I let you really just take out.
No problem.
You know, what is the racial makeup of the school board counts?
It's six-six. Six-six, melanated, African descendant, six-six, pale-skinned, European dependent.
And we have a significant, is there a significant number?
And really, it should be automatically seven-five, because the same Klansman that, that, that went off last night and got pissed off because I said the word hypocritical, he only represents one goddamn school. It's only one school. See, so they're fictitiously- Exactly.
Hold on, if you don't mind me asking, what school he represent?
University. It's the elementary.
Oh, yeah.
University out in, in, in the southeast, yeah. So, that's the school that he rep- now, how the hell, this supposed to be a school system, you could put one school in a whole nother goddamn district.
Yeah.
So, but they do that because he's their hardcore racist wannabe Donald Trump, but he, you know, he encountered the wrong one.
That's why I want to also ask you, like, what, what position did this, uh, Keith Burton hold before they, they wanted to put him in?
He was the chief academic officer for the whole school district for the past decade, over the past decade.
So, he probably hell wait on like, on, like, helping who get like elected to the school board?
No, 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 none of that, but he was over the sta- the so-called academic standards, setting the policies and how the function would-
So, he's the reason that our schools are failing?
Goddamn right. He's the primary reason. And so, but deals have been cut with like, Dolly-
Dottie Bell.
Dottie Bell.
Well, Dottie Bell, she ain't been shit since she was teaching me in middle school, but I ain't gonna speak on that.
I know that.
Hey, brother, this is a cold-blooded game, um, Nesto, and so, there are deals that the people don't know about behind the scene. And so, you saw it kinda like yesterday, one of the white female school board members, there was a lady up asking for a tax exemption for her company, and this how dumb these people are. She's like, oh, you and I went to school together.
Ah, you said it right.
We're classmates. So, now, you're, you're now introducing in nepotism, proneness, into the, to, oh, and then she caught us, said, "Am I, was I supposed to not say that?"
That'd be some dumb motherfucker.
Hey, bro, you, you, hey, bro, you can't be this dumb.
And I'mma tell you another thing I noticed watching that video, cause I'm real observing. When he was telling you, when he was saying, nigga, uh, you gonna apologize. Notice he looked over there at Dottie and say, yeah, he not gonna talk to me like-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, you need to get him in line.
You need to get your nigga partner in line.
Who that nigga on that dance?
Exactly.
Who that nigga on that dance?
So, I, I, so where the significant number of melanated school board members that is going along with this? This, this, this attempt to circumvent the whole process?
Well, well, for sure, Dozart and, and Dottie Bell, they are, they are definitely the two. Now, Jasmine Green voted against it, Terrence Vincent voted against it, Darren Dixon voted against it. Darren Dixon voted against it, and Mary Tramell voted against it. But when it comes to Dottie, she showed her hand last night. Although she didn't vote against it last week, she let it be known that they just threw Benita Dozier out there to the wolves, and she she basically put herself on the host row last week. And she went on and did the flipping because see, had she voted six-six, it would've died. See, but see, when you make a motion like that, if you ever see somebody make a motion like that, they already got the votes. So that's why the white chick last week made the motion, and they rolled with it seven to five. And so that's what, and the motion was, and and by the way, here's what happened. You got twelve, you got twelve members. What should have happened was that they say, okay, we're gonna take the top three, and and that's who we're gonna bring in to interview. That's not what happened. What they did was to attach a fictitious numbering system. And it was so convoluted, they introduced it last week. The damn school board members didn't even know what to do. So it was a point rating system, and and so the firm who was paid seventy thousand, they participated in the conspiracy. So all of this was introduced while we're sitting in the audience, and then all of a sudden.
Part of where they're sending the thousand.
Hell, yeah. And so, so they introduced the scoring system, and the people on the school board didn't even know what the hell was going on. The next thing you know, they start to call out. One entity gets, Keith Burton gets fifty-eight. Now, how do we know what the score is? Because it should have been a scoring system anyway. But they say he got fifty-eight, the next one was thirty-something, and then all of a sudden, the white chick says, I move that we, um, stop the process and just take the top vote getter.
Ah, yeah, that's all right.
It was already set in place. So this is what what everything comes down. So they only did that because they knew they had one Negro that would flip, at least one Negro, and that was Benita Dozier.
Do they have term limits?
Yeah, they have term limits. You can run three consecutive terms. So Dottie Bell is term limited. Mary Tramell, Dozier, the white guy Rochelle, it's a few of them term limited.
Well, that's good. That, you said a bunch of names that need to get to, get out of there.
But but we gotta get legitimate people in because if not, they just gonna keep recycling. Exactly. Start the process back up.
So go ahead and and we finna go on, I'm, well, I'm finna go ahead and turn this flow over to you so you can really educate the people on, you know, everything dealing with far as last, what what was last night was about and everything, you know, surrounding it.
Yeah, so so in essence, like I said, there was a group of grassroots people who started to put pressure out there. Mari Hassan and her group, they were the ones that principally mobilized.
Yeah, she just text me getting on my ass. She every wild one now.
Yeah, so they were the ones who principally mobilized the ministers, and the ministers did a very good job of coming out and putting it down. But we have to stop reacting and being proactive. And so what ends up happening, it was a good showing, very good showing. But we're in the position because some of the same ministers supported Dottie Bell and some of the ones who are doing this to our people. We have to get out of this whole concept of identity politics. Identity politics is killing us. And when I say identity politics is, that's my relative. You know he's retarded, but I'm still gonna vote for him. You, I mean, I mean, you know, he barely can count.
You know that boy didn't do the good in school.
Okay, but I'm still vote for him. That's my cousin, that's my kinpo, or that's my classmate. Or that's my sorority sister, or that's my fraternity brother, or that's my Mardi Gras crew member, or that's my Masonic member. The only time you do stupid stuff like this is primarily in politics, religion. You would never do this if you're about to go in for cataract surgery. Your cousin tells you, hey, boy, I can work on your damn eyes. I can remove them, I can remove them damn cataracts.
Cock is, eyes cock like a pistol.
Okay, so now why don't you let your cousin, who says that can do your cataracts, do your cap- now, now you wanna do what? I need to see your credentials. I need to see your education.
Because people deem things like that as serious.
Exactly. Now, now let me show you how stupid that is. Guess who regulates policy on all doctors? All pharmacists, all engineers, all business people, everybody, who regulates policy on them?
The lawmakers.
The lawmakers. So so they got more power than those specialists. So when you think that they need to have actually a greater amount of knowledge than those people? Because they're regulating policy on them, but they don't see that. And that's where we're at, and we're constantly in the mix of believing that we can force evil people to do good. Evil people's job, Ernesto, is to do goddamn evil. You can't have the Dallas Cowboy. The New Orleans Saints is playing the Dallas Cowboy. New Orleans Saints, Dallas Cowboy, will you please score a touchdown for us? That ain't how they work. The Dallas Cowboys gotta score their own touchdowns, and the Saints gotta do what?
Score down.
And and whoever scores the most, that determines who wins the game. What happens with good people, they're sitting their ass on the sidelines. They not even, well, they not even in the side, on the sidelines. They in the road outside of the damn stadium. They not in the parking lot, they not in the stands, they not on the bench, and they goddamn sure not on the field of play.
Name interested in the game.
They not even in, but guess who they want to to do right by them? The goddamn evil people. And the evil people are not gonna do right by you. So again, why is that? They're miseducated, they're still enslaved, and it's all about black labor and white wealth.
I heard that.
Okay, and so we, if we do not educate ourselves into understanding how this thing works, we're gonna be totally out to lunch. So what I did today, I brought, and I I'm gonna pass these over here to you. So this is why white folks do what they do with the school system. I want y'all to really pay attention to this. This is a city of Shreveport property tax notice, and this is one from two thousand and sixteen on one of my old properties that was located on Eustis, or is located on Eustis. And in this, when you pay your taxes, it breaks down where the where the tax dollars go, okay? So you can see this. If you don't pay, if you don't pay these, what the white folks say is, you don't count. Now, the city taxes don't go to the school system, but I wanted to show you because you have to pay city and prop, um, parish property taxes. Now, if you live in your home, if you are buying your own, or if you so-called own it, which you don't never own property in America, we'll talk about that. You'll get a a tax notice like this, okay? Now, if you, if you have homestead exemption, you don't have to pay any taxes. But if you don't have homestead exemption, you're gonna get a tax notice like that. This is on another property that that I had. And so now what ends up happening, this tells you where the dollars for your tax dollars go. I want you all, I'm gonna pass this to you, and I want you to show, this is from last year. I want you to tell your viewers who gets the most of the goddamn tax dollars fr- from the parish.
Let's check it out.
Look up top, that graph.
It says the Caddo Parish School Board gets fifty-four percent.
Fifty-four point three percent.
And the next upcoming is nineteen point one.
What?
What the fee?
They get al- almost fifty-five percent of every dollar that is collected by the sheriff on behalf of the parish of Caddo. Are you, are you, are you, are you seeing? So white folks are basically saying, we're the number one taxpayer. So we need to determine where our taxpayer dollars are gonna go.
We tired of educating these niggas.
We tired of educating Negro.
Nah, I hear that.
Y'all, all y'all wanna do is be ratchet anyway. Okay, so so, so who else gets the money? The biomedical, oh, hold on, who goes second? The Caddo Parish Commission. Okay, they gets nineteen point one percent. Then the sheriff gets nine point nine percent. The library gets six point eight percent. The waterway tax assessor, they get five-two, five point two percent. And then other entities get four point seven percent. So let's see the other entities. The other entities, they, that's the, that's the biomedical research center, the Caddo Assessor, the courthouse maintenance, the jail facilities, the juvenile court. I mean, all of these people get a percentage, but the number one is who?
The school.
The school board.
Can I see that again? You know, the people ain't gonna trust you. Well, our people will, but you know, white people ain't gonna trust you.
And so now, what white folks are basically saying is we don't trust our dollars to just anybody. But here's the thing, if you rent, Ernesto, if you rent, are you paying property taxes?
Uh, to to me, yeah, cuz you paying them, they paying the taxes with the money.
Come on, brother, come on, brother.
You're smart. You smart as hell.
Come on, brother. Even if you're renting, listen to me, y'all. Don't let these white folks and these Uncle Tom's sell-out Negroes tell you that if you're renting, you're not paying property taxes. How in the hell do you think they're paying the property taxes? With a percentage of your rent dollars. So you're vested, just like they're vested. You just don't get a notice. So you're indirectly helping them. Well, you're directly helping them to pay the tax dollars that they're responsible for. So you're indirectly paying the dollars because you're paying your goddamn rent.
Black labor and white wealth.
Black labor, white wealth.
I know that's right.
That's how this whole thing works. So now, the white folks are like, damn. You know, these Negroes, they, I mean, they wanna be ratchet. They wanna be ratchet. They wanna, they wanna commit murder. They wanna, you know, do all this foolishness. So what we gonna do? We gonna, we gonna now set up these communities on the outskirts of the city. And we're gonna create our own neighborhood. Now this, now we're getting ready to get into why Mary Tramell was handed a piece of paper to introduce last night on the agenda a forty million dollar deal to do a school. Interesting.
They gonna do a school while they shutting down all these other schools.
But they shutting down the other schools to create more money to fund what? The new school. Well, who wants a new school? The people who have moved out into the Elbe Road area. Why you think they built that whole area up with the nice Krogers and?
It's a nice area cuz I be out there using they shit.
Nice little restaurant.
Nice restaurants. Hey, look, I'm not mad. Listen, anybody who puts into the tax base should be able to have a school. I ain't mad at that. But don't go through this whole cloak and dagger and we love Jesus and no, 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 no. We not gonna play those games. Just be straight up. Look, we, we control these many tax dollars. So we want a new school, so at the end of the day, what we need to basically be able to do is have our school, but we need to still help to upgrade the existing school infrastructure and things like that. But a lot of that is on us. We need to fix up our own neighborhoods and communities and take over our own assets. Cuz a lot of these buildings, we need to basically take over and now create our own charter schools so we can specifically educate our children the way that they need to be educated.
Can evil people be straightforward?
Hell, no, they can't be straightforward. They can't be straightforward. So that's why they do what they do. So you have to call them to the, to the, to the turf on what they're actually doing, and that's what they hate. But it's like truth, why lie when the truth will work? But evil people gonna lie. They just gonna do it. It's just in them.
I'm gonna tell you, it was a, it was a man I met during this last campaign. He told me he used to clean, he cleans up for, uh, Nicholson them, right? He said, he was like, he wasn't black neither. He was like, man, them people straight Klansmen.
Yes, sir.
And I never told you this before.
But you say anything, I need y'all to hit that like button, subscribe, hit the notification bell, hit that like button once again when they get the likes up.
And share.
That's right.
Uh, yeah. And he told me, he said, man, them, these, he was like, I'm serious, man. He say, these people are straight up Klansmen. I was like, well, I ain't surprised, but they just go, and and they just speaks towards a lot of games that these officials and stuff tend to play. They try to act like they good people and stuff like that. But the whole time, this is still David Deuce, Louisiana.
How how was the energy in there when they started chanting to let you speak?
Oh, oh, it was, it was powerful. It was, it was very powerful, energy positive. People were amazed at the kind of money that was being discussed. And and they were amazed because most of them have never been to a school board meeting. And I can't even blame a lot of them because most of them probably go to work and they strategically, Ernesto, put, uh, scheduled the 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 meetings at four-thirty for the school board and three o'clock for the city council, and three-thirty for the parish commission so that the majority of people can come.
They at work, or they just about to get off work.
Exactly. So that's all done strategically because they don't want the people engaged and involved.
What what's the, uh, the gentleman name you were speaking with again? Uh, Rochelle?
Yes, Barry Rochelle.
Barry Rochelle. Since Pac-Man said, we ain't gave nobody a booty look in a long time, we gonna give Mr. Rochelle a booty look. You happy?
I appreciate that, bro, cuz she deserve a booty look.
Booty look.
Yes, yes, sir.
And so, so when we look at this book here, Ernesto, by Adam Fairclaw, again, Teaching Equality, Black Schools During the Era of Jim Crow, Adam Fairclaw breaks down the fact that we had so many positive schools. And 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 mind you, public education doesn't start until after chattel slavery, okay? So this is when public education started. So our schools were about the business of helping to elevate our people. We made more gains as it relates to learning, education, literacy, coming out of slavery than has ever happened in the history of this country. I mean, I mean, our people are just the bomb. So what ends up happening, we start kicking ass. But what we don't have is what? The same resource. We don't have the same textbooks. We don't have the same schools. I mean, the 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 infrastructure that they had. We don't have the same anything. It's just through our grit that our people started. But guess what? We kicked ass. Even with secondhand, thirdhand textbooks, we kicked ass, right? So you started to get people like Charles Hamilton Houston and Thurgood Marshall and others who are saying, you know what? We need to integrate. And 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 the white boy talks about that in this book. We need to integrate. So what ends up happening, they make a big push, and this is where the Brown versus Topeka Board of Education thing comes in. They're making a push. Their plan like is to get better resources. But the reality is, they thought by having African-American children around them good, lily-white children.
They was soft in they heart.
Exactly. And then, you know, everybody would just, we are the world. We are the children. But Ernesto, that ain't.
That's TV land.
That's TV land. This is a real jungle out here. This is real warfare out here. This is a fight for resources.
It's civil war, and by civil, I mean the way they play in the game.
Yeah. It's about, it's about resources, man. And so they fought to goddamn close down the damn schools that we're doing. They fought to close the school. Negroes representing us fought to close down. Look, man, let me give a prime example. In Stoner Hill, what was the school that educated the children over in Stoner Hill? What was that called?
What the, Valencia?
Valencia. What is it called today?
Caddo, uh, Magna High.
All right. So now, what's the politics of Caddo Magna High? The Negroes wanted to be where, with the white folk. So they let the Negroes up Stoner Hill now integrate Byrd. They closed Valencia down, and now they bust white students into the inner city to create the illusion that they're investing in the what? The inner city.
But hell of a game.
But what they're investing in is white folks coming into the inner city to get a college preparatory education. Because when the Brown versus Topeka Board of Education legislation, the ruling came down by the Supreme Court that inter- integrated the school system, now white folks say, man, I ain't let my children go to no school with no Negroes. So a lot of them started to send their children where? To private school. But guess what? Their ass was broke. So they couldn't afford to send them to private school. So now you gotta create a private school with what? Public tax dollars. In comes the magnet. But they knew they couldn't just create it for white folks. So right around, right up the street from your, your house right now, Lakeshore, it used to be a junior high school. So I was going to Lakeshore in the late seventies. So they started to try to recruit the best of the best from Lakeshore, Jazz Clark, Lanier, Midway, Bethel. Why? Cuz they wanted a certain caliber of African American student to go to magnet.
And then, and also, that makes the, the, the school grade feel cuz they took most of the smarter students.
Exactly.
School started, instead of they evening it out, they started feeling.
So this is how you start the process of eroding the stellar academic achievements in your neighborhood communities. This started in the seventies, I was, I was the first entities recruited to come to magnet. But guess what? Me and most of my folks said, tell you what, a goddamn magnet, we going to what? Fair Park. We going to Booker T and we're going to Huntington. We're going to our neighborhood schools. We're not only going because we wanna be in Fair Park's band, not only because we wanna be in Booker T's band and Huntington's band and play sports. We're going because academically, goddammit, we are intellectual gangsters. And we ain't gotta go be by no white folks to now learn, we knew that. And so, we went to our neighborhood schools. The neighborhood schools is what, are what, they're the assets that make up the neighborhood. So when we were at Fair Park on a Friday night and the community is coming out to celebrate not only us in the band, but the football and it's a community thing. But when you kill the school, guess what you kill? You kill the goddamn community.
Another thing, like, if you look, when I was going to Booker T, yours probably, well, we had three hundred people, if dead. The band was so small, but I remember my brother generation, the band was big, all, all the games looked like the Soul Bowl game.
Yeah.
Not just that one game.
Not just that one game.
When I went there, it was only thirty people, probably eighteen people on the football team, barely anybody in the band.
That's what happens. So, and why is that? The white man's, the perception that the white man's ice.
Is cold.
Is cold. So I'ma send my child to Byrd, like, now, you know, Byrd is three schools in one.
Yeah, we was just telling one of their, their alumni that.
Yeah, it's three schools in one. You got special ed Byrd, you got a whole school special ed. You got general population Byrd, that's where the majority of Negroes go. And then you got magnet Byrd. Only about two to three percent of the melanated population is in magnet Byrd. And, and, and the reason I could tell you what I'm about to tell you is because my stepson, Jalen Kennedy, came to stay with me initially back in two thousand eighteen up until two thousand twenty. So I was one of those parents who was participating in the, what is that, PTA, PTSA? I was one of only two African American parents that attended those meetings. No Negro, I mean, bro, the school is majority African American overall. But in the magnet, it's majority white. And so what I came to learn, Negroes don't wanna do right by their goddamn children. They don't want, they just, oh, the white folks got it.
I don't, I don't, I don't think, I think, well, like you say, about the times when people working, working stuff, most, and most, most African American parents, most of them got two jobs or most of them single parents, so most of them really ain't got, got time.
Yeah, cuz I'ma be honest, my mama, majority of my life, my mama worked two and three jobs, white literally. She worked two and three jobs and she tried her best to be involved in my education to the point that she could. Cuz you know, like, my mom far from dumb.
Yeah.
You know, like, some stuff just kinda tough.
Most, most of them probably ain't have, uh, transportation.
So, so I said that to say this, I think, I think they, the way they have it set up and then, oh, okay, I, I, I remember the exact point I was going to. I think the biggest downfall is this. They allow our students to keep going, like, past the first and second grade without being able to read. So, like I was saying with my mama, you know, her trying her best, like, to be honest, she, she really didn't have to do much when it came to me figuring shit out because I could learn concepts.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? And it's super tough cuz I, I'm, I had a bunch of friends from the neighborhood, you know, so I was very acquainted to knowing, like, what they was going through.
Yeah.
And a lot of these motherfuckers just can't read.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
A lot of them still can't read.
Yeah, so, and if you can't read, learning a new concept is gonna be the toughest thing in the world. And I feel like we gotta, we need to establish that precedent to where it's no more, if your kid ain't able to read first, second grade, then we gonna, cuz, cuz being honest, me graduating later or earlier, it didn't change what jobs I was gonna work the night, you know what I'm saying? Me being a, a, equipped with knowledge and, and able to do, learn skills and things of that sort, that has a much more, a much more effect of where I'll be headed in life.
Yeah, yeah.
You see what I'm saying? So I just feel like, uh, I just feel like that's one of the things we need to focus on. But, like you say, it still come down to school board making policies like that because I can feel however the fuck I wanna feel.
Yeah.
You know, it, it ain't gonna change nothing until we get out there and make those changes happen.
Exactly. And I, but I will say, and, and my mom was one of those mothers who could not be at most of my events and things of that nature. But see, here's the point I'm making. Here in Queensborough, we had Miss, Miss Bobby Henderson, she was one of our community mothers. She was the den mother for our Boy Scouts, our Weebleows, our Cub Scouts, our Girl Scouts, our, uh, Brownies. She had the Supernatural's dance lines, she was our band club, our band president at Lakeshore and Fair Park. So, but my mother, although she couldn't be there, she invested in Miss Henderson. So what I'm saying to you is, Miss Henderson was also involved in the PTSA or the PTA. We gotta have individuals who now can be supported by the parents who can't. Now, but a lot of them can now. A lot of these punk ass parents can. But the ones who can't, now they invest into those individuals so that now those entities can represent your child at, at these activities. And it was wonderful because, and I don't know how Miss Henderson did it, we just got through celebrating her the other month. Cuz she had four children of her own and she was married. I told Miss Henderson just the other month when we recognized her, I don't know how you did what you did. But she loved the children of Queensborough. And we had people like that in Lakeside, Allendale, my, I mean, Moretown, Cedar Grove, you've had people like that all over.
That's for sure. The, the village concept.
That's the village.
And, 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 and that's something that I'm seeing though, in the neighborhoods, people are, are moving more towards like that. How, how you talking, how?
Yeah.
When I was growing up, Lakeside, we considered each other family.
Exactly.
Like, we all considered each other family, like, we tie each other cuz she, we want cuz, she in real life. But it seems like nowadays, more people are being looked at as strangers, they're looking.
Individuals.
Yeah, so within a community, it's not the same camaraderie anymore, like, how, I could go and people, eh, I can go in my friend them house and, you know, we was going to each other's houses, like, I don't see that as much.
It's the internet, it's, kids don't go outside and play as much anymore.
Exactly.
You know, people, most, most time, people somewhere, they on their phone, they not interacting.
Exactly.
And we need more human inter- interaction like we had back in the day.
Ernesto, you hit up on a good point because the, the internet, social media has created an anti-social behavior. That's one of the, the outcomes. Y'all just saw what happened on Sunday over in Mendon, when it's the eleven year old.
Yeah, that was.
Murdered his mother and like grandfather because of him buying video games on their credit card. And now they checked him and what does he do? He kills him, so, so now you have this dynamic going on, things that we would have never even thought about. But when you are now playing all these video games and not putting positive education in your mind, positive learning in your mind, this is now what ends up happening. And now, it gets back to black labor, white wealth because though you don't wanna work, quote unquote, for seven fifty or ten dollars an hour, when you take your punk ass to Angola, guess what? You gonna work for four cent a nap. You gonna work for four cent a nap, ooh wee. And so, so the job, the, the number one job that these white folks have pretty much laid out for these children who are of African descent, Latino descent. Their job is to go to jail, baby. That's your job. Your job is to be a commodity for the state in the system of incarceration. In terms of learning, you know, when we look at, when we launched Dad's On Duty in two thousand twenty one, the per pupil allotment for Southwood at that point in time was fifteen, roughly fifteen, sixteen thousand per person. And so, we had about fifteen hundred students at Southwood. So like I told you in MJ, Southwood was a twenty-five million dollar a year corporation. But they didn't get all of that twenty-five million in the school. The central office got that money and then they distributed what they wanted to, to Southwood. At the time, we were under Dr. Kim Pendleton, today we're under Sister Queen Mother Jordan. Miss Jordan and Dr. Pendleton, outstanding, uh, individuals, but they don't get all of the money that's designated to the institution. This is a convoluted game of now using children in order to now create employment opportunities for adults. And, and that would, nothing would be wrong with that if you really had dedicated people like the teachers that I had coming up. You don't really have that, and a lot of these schools, you have long-term subs because your better teachers don't wanna teach in the junk. Today, I money, I came in from Tyler, I have to take my mom to her doctor's appointment over in Tyler. And I kinda did my volunteer duty, Dad's On Duty at Southwood. And bruh, from when we started with all the gang violence to now, bruh, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even believe, I mean, South, bruh, it's like, and Southwood is a very good school, it's a very good school. But you get this, this negative perception and it's crazy. But what we don't have is more and more involvement from the parents, primarily males. The father, and I get it, some of them are working, but here's what I did. Robert, when we talk about engaging males and men in this process of Dad's On Duty. So you do the numbers, fifteen hundred students, down and down to about a thousand, cuz Miss Jordan kicked out those hard and she ain't playing no game.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, John.
She don't play no, does she play, yeah, she don't play no game, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so, so check it out, Ernesto, fifteen hundred. What if I told you, there's an irrefutable fact about every child at every school, elementary, junior highs? There's an irrefutable fact, it doesn't matter their gender, their ethnicity, their age, there's an irrefutable fact. And that irrefutable fact is, each one of those children, going back two generations, have three fathers and three mothers. Meaning, they have one biological father and two biological grandfathers. They have one biological mother and two biological grandmothers. So, let's just focus on the fathers. So three times fifteen hundred is forty-five hundred. We ain't trying to get forty-five hundred fathers and grandfathers to volunteer at Southwood, that would be way too much, right? Our numbers only focus on getting two to four percent. And it's hard to do that because the people are so caught up in themselves or just their child. Now, the reason you can't just be caught up in just your child is because your child don't live in a, in a community by itself. And see, they will probably encounter one of the young, um, individuals who potentially could become a ratchet savage. That would narrate.
What's that term?
A ratchet savage. That could then take your child out, you see what I'm saying? Cuz we had a few young people that get murdered over the past few years at Southwood and it was just sad. It was a sad commentary. So when we're talking about this school thing, the leadership of the school system, the superintendent, that's a major thing. And what I'm telling you guys, they're playing games with these children because they're only looking at them as commodities to leverage in between nine or ten, up to about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars per. All right, so, so like I'm saying, the, the essence of these children, they are being used as commodities for compensating individuals in the public school system. And that doesn't mean that all of the public school officials, whether they be teachers, educators, paraprofessionals, administrators or whatnot, are bad, but there's a significant percentage that are. And the, the, the children have to be, the, the parents, the village have to come in and get involved in the process. But the leadership, the, the superintendent, that makes a big difference. And so, you gotta have people who understand what you're dealing with in the city of Shreveport Parish or Cattle because over seventy percent of our student population are African Americans. And you gotta have now individuals who understand the psychology of these family dynamics of what's going on and now can come in with some creative concepts that can help families now better equip their children because other than that, the, the place that they want them to go is, is, is jail. And, and in the state of Louisiana, I remember when my, my stepson, as I was telling you, Jalen Kennedy, did the school to prison pipeline project back in two thousand seven. And he became the national spokesperson for the issue of school to prison pipeline. At that point in time, Robert and Ernesto, the per inmate allotment in the state of Louisiana was roughly forty-five thousand dollars per child. Forty-five thousand. Seven years later, and that was in two thousand seventeen, seven years later, that amount is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. See, they want the children to go to jail. Cuz you get more money, the state gets more money for children.
Than an adult.
Than an adult. So they wanna match them out. So now, when you see, right now, Queensborough Elementary, they about to close Queensborough Elementary and Atkins Elementary. They about to shut them down cuz they gotta create money for what?
Jail.
For, for the school.
And the new school.
Oh, the new school.
But they, they just closed Warner Park now.
Exactly. They closing all these schools in the inner city community, what are children? So now, how do children get to school? They gotta be bussed. See? Instead of just walking to school. So these are the dynamics of what we're rolling with, so when you talk about a superintendent, you gotta have somebody who is fighting for the inner city community. And the, and the other thing that the school system doesn't understand, as again, Malcolm X said it best, education is our passport to the future, for the tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for today. Education is the cornerstone of economic development. It's the cornerstone of economic development. In any city, in any parish or county, in any state, it is the cornerstone. So now, if the people are not being educated in a positive and progressive. So now, if the people are not being educated in a positive and progressive manner, they're gonna now get educated in a negative manner, i.e. turning to the streets. Hence, they want them going to jail. Hence, black labor, white wealth, from the incarceration system, which puts you in slavery by another name.
And I'm gonna say another thing too. You know, the presence, the presence of a, of a, I'm gonna say blackmail, but male, but the presence of a black male, I've seen how kids behave tremendously different. When a black male is around, they, they try harder, they more disciplined, like they, they, it's just something about that black man being there that makes a child want to kind of. Make them proud or something, you know?
For example, when, when we was doing all the spa thing. All the centers we went to was predominantly ran by women. The kids were more, like a little bit more.
Tuner.
But the ones that were black males, black older males was there.
It was more structured.
Yeah, more structured.
And I give, and, and, and it's beautiful because I know Jabba Jaws runs the, runs the center up in Cherokee Park area. And it's very beautiful to see him involved because rec centers are a great way of engaging young people. So Shreveport is, is man, again, it's a gold mine. But we gotta fix these certain key components and we gotta get grassroots people to understand evil people are not gonna do the right thing. So we gotta get the people who are gonna represent the interests of our people in elected positions, school board, city council, parish commissions. And they gotta have a proven track record of caring about the people. They gotta have, they gotta have a plan. And because until, and, and they gotta have some goddamn courage.
So who pocket did that seventy thousand dollars go into?
Well, it, it went to the firm, MacPherson and whatever the last name of.
And who they friends are.
Oh, oh, they're, they're friends of, as a matter of fact, they let it out. Dottie Bell and all of them had dealt with this firm before. And so they roll with the agenda and they, they do work all over the country. And so, and here's, here's the hustle, so y'all can understand this, your, your viewers can understand this. In corporate America, they've, they've, they've tried to eliminate a lot of the human resources work when it comes to hiring people because it's an easy way for them to get sued. If they find out, if the federal government found out, we want so many females or we want so many males or we want them to look like this. See, you can't do that in corporate America, but if you hire a recruitment firm, you can do it. You can tell them, we want so many females, we want, and people don't know that. That's how the game is played. And so, cause you know, coming out of corporate America back in nineteen ninety-five, that was my last corporate stint with Astro Pharmaceuticals. And I was one of the few African Americans that, who have ever worked in pharmaceutical sales. I was a legalized drug dealer, one of only, yeah. That's, 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 I sold, I sold legal drugs, Toprol, Excel and Rhinocort, cardiovascular hypertensive medication. And so what, what you have is they would be able to now tell the, the, the corporations could tell the recruitment company, we want so many females, we want so many Negroes, we want so many whites. So this is what happened with this company. So their job is to create the illusion that it's all objective. Cause they're getting paid by their client, even though their client is, is actually us. But, but they're being represented by these sellouts and these clansmen, like Barry Rochelle. And, and, and so now, they don't ever want to be called out. They want to create the illusion that they good Christians. But we ain't gonna let that go because we know you're not a legitimate so-called Christian following so-called Jesus, yes, you would. Because your words and your actions are totally different.
Yeah, we done seen what Christians did three hundred years ago.
Come on.
He said you gonna apologize.
He got the nerve.
I'm just trying to see when and what date can we expect this to happen?
I don't, I don't apologize no clan member. That just ain't never gonna happen there, baby. It ain't even, it ain't, man, look at my ancestors would turn over their goddamn graves if I ever apologized to a clansman or, or, or some white supremacists. Bruh, it ain't even, if, if Barry Rochelle even knew my pedigree, he would have kept his goddamn mouth closed. My goddamn great, great uncle, John D. Moore is the founder of Mortan. What the hell do I look like apologizing to a goddamn hillbilly cracker for? It will never happen.
I know that, right?
That will never happen. And I was being polite to your punk ass. I was real cool, I ain't even get turned up. I was real nice. But what he said then, I'm like, oh my goodness, like you better, you.
It took him everything in it. It took him everything not to call you a nigga, I guarantee you that.
He said in his.
He called it to, he called you one when he got in the car.
But I told him, I said, you can see me, you can see me outside, I ain't got no problem with you. But that Donald Trump, that, that don't work with me. Because I, you, you're showing that yourself, that you A, ain't no damn Christian. And then B, that, like you said, just like with the exorcism, that damn demonic spirit came.
Yeah, 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 he can hold it in. I feel, I, I was scared for everybody in the room.
But this is, but this is where we're at. And, and look, I wanted to go, cause I always like to hit the people with a little scripture. And, and, and so again, when we go to the, to that book of Hosea, oh my goodness. Oh my goodness. We go to that fourth chapter of Hosea. See, we gonna relate this to scripture, cause we had some, some ministers in the audience. And so when you go to that, that fourth chapter of Hosea. And look, man, look, it's right there in the sixth verse, listen to this, man. My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge. Not for a lack of cars, not for a lack of money, not for a lack of food, not for a lack of clothes, but for a lack of knowledge. Because thou hast rejected knowledge, I will also reject thee. That thou shall be no priest to me. Ain't no preacher gonna be able to tell you anything because you're rejecting learning. What did I tell you? These Negroes don't know the bylaws, they don't know the robber rules of order, they don't know the state law. So what is, what is God saying? I'm gonna reject your punk ass. Seeing that thou hast forgotten the law. What did I ask them? Does it say a policy? It say the law of thy God, I will also forget thy children. That's what's going on. See, our children are being played in a diabolical, wicked, evil game by these individuals who, uh, let's go to the first verse. Hear the word of the Lord, ye children of Israel, for the Lord hath a controversy with the inhabitants of the land. Because there is no truth, nor mercy, nor knowledge of God in the land. See, so now the children are getting caught up because the so-called adults lack ethics, lack morals. And it says in the second verse, by swearing and lying and killing and stealing and committing adultery, they break out and blood, touch it, blood. That's what's going on right now. And so, so when you look at this dynamic, we have to now understand that if we want to save our children, we got to stand on the square of righteousness because the evil people who are coming for us, they are gangsters in deception and wickedness. So they'll create the illusion that they're so-called Christians or Muslims or Hindus or Buddhists. When the reality is, there's something totally different.
They're the synagogue of Satan.
They're the synagogue of Satan, brother.
I know that's right.
And that, and that is where we're at. So I like to bring this to the point so that we can understand this is a spiritual and cultural warfare. So if we continue to promote ratchetness, it gives the foundation for the Barry Rochelle. To say, hey man, that nigga, let's keep all clothes in school. Them Negroes don't need no goddamn education. Let's now create a brand new school in, 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 out in southeast Shreveport, Ellerby Road area. Because those individuals are gonna be the leadership anyway. And so, hey man, this is a call to action for brothers, our sisters, anybody who is serious about saving our children. If you won't stand up for your guy, look, bruh, it's, it's a couple of people you got to stand up for. The damn children, the damn elderly, the disabled. You got, if you don't stand up for them, you should just kill your guys. So what you think about?
Speaking of disabled, how you, how you feel about people, uh, taking advantage of mentally challenged people to, to make profit off of them?
Like Zil.
Death, death, bruh.
I know that.
Death penalty, bruh, death penalty. Hey, bruh, you, you, you take advantage of a mentally challenged individual, death penalty, man.
And not just one, it's numerous of them.
Yeah, it, it's death penalty, bruh. See, at some point, we gotta get, we gotta set a standard of what can't happen. You, you, you can't have sellouts representing your legislative affairs, your judicial affairs, your law enforcement affairs. You can't have that. But for damn sure, bruh, you can't have people messing over disabled people, children and elderly. You can't have, you don't want nobody to mess over anybody, but those are three protected groups that we got to represent. I mean, it's just, it's just the bottom line. It's, 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 this is where this is at. And so now, we're at a place where although they're closing schools down, now here, here's the thing. Ernesto, you know they closing schools down? Robert, you know they closing schools down? What now exists, Robert, as a result of them closing the schools down?
You said what exists?
Yeah, what exists?
Uh, free, uh, money, money.
What exists?
Available funds.
An opportunity for us.
Oh, yeah, to go get them schools and, yeah, and make our own, yes, sir. Charter school, yes, sir, yes, it makes sense.
I know that's right.
It creates the opportunity for us. So even though it's bad, it really is not too goddamn bad. Because the game plan that we're working on, Get Up Incorporated, Best Thirteen, our coalition partners, we're trying to attract over three hundred thousand people to the city of Shreveport in concert with what Fifty Cents and the G-Unit Project is doing. So we attract all these people, what, what they go, what are children gonna be educated in?
So what they meant for bad, we gonna turn it into good.
Come on, bruh, come on, bruh, come on, bruh.
Know that's right.
Come on, bruh. But we still, of course, the majority of them will still remain in the public school system. So we gotta fight for them and create our own situation simultaneous. Because they ain't got nobody to fight for. So we gotta fight for. Unequivocally, we gotta fight for. But we gotta create specialized institutions where we can teach, where we can teach for real deal stuff. So we can now equip them to become future intellectual gangsters. Because the way that the white folks roll, this, this big thick book called The Bail Curve, the white folks saying, yo children are retarded. They ain't got no skills, they just, they are naturally savages. They're incompetent. Now, we know this is a lie, but look at this big thick book now, The Bail Curve. And so this is how they create the standardized test. Look, look what it says, intelligence and class structure in American life. These white folks set the precedent for this. So they create the book and make it seem like it's some scholarly achievement, but it's written, this is just trash. It's just Eurocentric trash. But again, if we don't have our own intelligentsia to rebut that, then it becomes a living thing. And so this is why they attempted to silence me. And they'll always try to silence us because now we can create that spark that now helps to ignite the individuals who are really wanting to now elevate in the game. That's what this whole, this is a fight for billions of dollars of tax revenues. Now, I've gone through the tax dynamic, I've discussed the fact that whether you rent or own, you do, you do what? Pay taxes. Whether that's residential or commercial, we've discussed that, we know now what their agenda is um, as it relates to trying to build a new school out in the Ellerby Road area. And again, I'm not mad at them. But you're not going to now kill us in order to save yourself. Because what, what Ellerby Road ultimately wants to do is to de-annex from the city of Shreveport. And guess what? I ain't got no problem with that, but guess what? You gonna have to cut us a check for ten to twenty billion dollars. I ain't talking about no million, ten to twenty billion. Because guess who put their infrastructure, their water and sewer lines out? Okay, we put the infrastructure, the roads, the highway. All of that is a byproduct of what the city of Shreveport has invested. So now I've connected all the dots for you. All we now got to do is get grassroots people involved in this process. There are more of us than it is of them. You all got to get out of the mindset of A, not voting, not being involved. Get out of the mindset of voting for somebody just because they're your goddamn relative. You went to school with them, you eat some hog head cheese with them, you, you goddamn went to school with them. Whatever your identity politics is, you got to get out of there and look at four things. You got, and, and this includes me. Evaluate me based on my resume, my empowerment resume, my empowerment references, my empowerment receipts and my empowerment recipe, meaning my plan. You do that with anybody before you give them your vote. Just like you would anybody who was doing cataract surgery, knee surgery, bat surgery. You gotta put the same level of analysis on vetting them as you would adopt.
Well, yeah, we kinda ran out of time. I wanna thank you for coming through. You know, this was extremely informative, you know, and every time, anytime something coming on, you know, we gonna come get you so you can let the people know and that way we can be elevated together and educated together, you know? I, I like to think that when we do have you on, that our, our audience leaves with a little more information that they had before, and that's always a good thing. So I wanna thank you for coming on again.
Thank y'all, brother, y'all, y'all blowing up.
I think you gonna be back sooner than, than later.
Appreciate y'all, brother.
Make sure y'all like, share, subscribe, go check out some of them books that he showed y'all and we out this thing.
Yes, sir.
This ain't my deal, but I just know about it.